Okay. Young record.
Good evening. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:40-6, at section of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
I am here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman woman, Grignani.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I commit my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands our nation under the God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Lamontowicz, can you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You?
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak about anything not on tonight's agenda? See none. Correspondence, Nora?
Yes. We have correspondence from Joseph O'Neal of Garafalo O'Neal and O'Neal. They are requesting that application 2204 Nakul Kazadwala, 130 Troy Road, Block 726, Lot 15, R3, be carried to October 23 without further notice and with all required extensions through October 31, 2024.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
We will be voting on the following resolutions. Application 24:44, 24:53, 24:54, 24:39, 24:24, 24:47. Nora, would you please take the roll?
So moved. Second.
One moment, please. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
For the record, Mr. Petty is here.
Application 24:06, Jasbar Singh, 8 Homer Street, Block 405, Lot 4, Zone R3. See variance to construct a new two-story, single-dwelling family home with roofed, front entranceway, and open deck with stairs contrary to Section 430-101, 430-35, Columns 10 and 13.
Okay. Mr. Singh, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name and spell your first and last name?
Last name Jasbar Singh S. I. N. H.
Great, you could have a seat. Will other people be testifying as well?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great. Please state your name, spell your first and last name.
Project C Miola. M. E. O. L. A. 28 Whipley Road, New Jersey.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name, spell your first and last name?
K. D. B. P. R. T. E. D. Last name P. R. T. E. D.
Okay, great. You can have a seat.
Mr. Miola, would you like to tell us why this applicant would like to have this home built, please?
I think we qualified you last time when you were testified in this matter, right?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
This is a piece of property that's at 8 Homer Street. There's an existing house on the property which client would like to replace with a new home.
Yes, miss. Well, I think what we'd like to hear initially is from the applicant as to why he wants to do what is being proposed to do. I think that would be helpful if you had, if the board had some idea of what the plan is and why he wants to construct what he wants to construct. I think that would be very helpful. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to speak up? Okay. So are you the, let me ask you a couple, are you the owner of the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you want to construct the house that has been designed for you, correct?
Yeah.
Why is it that you want to construct that particular house?
Maybe I can help out a little bit. The house has a lot of bathrooms compared to the normal dwelling unit that we see here.
That's right.
And maybe you could explain that function.
Yeah. Yeah, use the microphone. And what is your relationship to Mr. Singh?
I'm his cousin, and also I'm the builder. I'll be the builder as and when you approve this project. I'm a local builder. I live in Parsippany. I have built multiple houses in Parsippany. So I work very closely with the zoning engineering or the board. So one of the key requests that we had was that we wanted to put a house, and the owner wanted to put a house, which was setting a variance on the lot coverage. And the reason for that is they had, they have an extended family. They have their parents. They have their two kids that live with them. So based on that, they put one bedroom with an attached bathroom on the first floor for their older parents. There is one office room, and they are local residents. They run a big business in the city itself, Sabji Madi on 202. So they wanted to set up a home office. You know, post COVID, everybody is looking for one. And when you look at the second floor, I mean, I've built houses which are 40, 100 lots, 60, 180, 100, and bigger lots too. They all have four bedrooms. So they have four bedrooms on the second floor, and then they have a prayer room. So the only variance that I see from my perspective is, and I'm sure you guys are better than that, is that they're putting an office room downstairs, and they're also putting one prayer room upstairs. Other than that, it is one bedroom with an attached bathroom, and then there are three bedrooms upstairs with attached bathrooms. And that's not, in my professional opinion, that's not uncommon nowadays. I'm building multiple houses right now which are in reconstruction, where most of the people who are hiring me to build their houses are asking for an attached bathroom to each and every bedroom. I'm building one in Lake Shore Drive right now, where we have four bedrooms upstairs, both attached bathrooms. Here, we don't have. Here, we have rooms which don't have bathrooms. There are three, and those three are meant for their two sons and for themselves. And the downstairs bedroom with an attached bathroom is meant for their parents. That's it.
So how many people are going to live in the house?
My six people, Mr. Jasbar Singh, his wife, their two sons, and their parents.
Okay. So two parents are gonna live on the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Singh and his wife are going to live.
Second floor.
Second floor. And two sons.
They both have a room each.
Have a room each. And how old are the sons?
One 25, another one, you have a 90.
Okay.
25, 90.
Are either of those sons married?
No. They both will have a room to themselves. There is a guest room that they have provisioned. That's the fourth bedroom. We are extended family. People do come, you know, to visit them from India, so they have kept one guest bedroom and a prayer room. That's pretty much it.
Okay. And what is the, you said there was a home office?
Yes, home office.
What is the purpose of the home office?
I mean, the intent is that they should have, let's say, you know, they do, they own a Indian grocery store in the town, Sabji Madi on 202. So in case they need to do some work from that, they can just, you know, manage their books or something. Because both of them are not at Sabji Madi at one point of time. If somebody is handling purchases, they can work from the home office. It's just some facility that they want to create or future in case somebody needs to work.
And there's also a bathroom, a full bathroom off of the study?
There is, there is one full bathroom, which is a common bathroom for anybody who's, you know, coming and visiting their house, because they don't want anybody to go into that, the parents' bathroom. So they kept another bathroom. So on the first floor, you will see two bathrooms.
Two full?
Two full bathrooms.
Yes.
And what is intended for the parents? And what is intended for the parents' use in school?
The second is, I'm, second, we're not a stickler.
Just have a bathroom on the first floor.
Yeah. The second one, we are not a stickler, again, as a common practice. Last five, six houses that I've built in Parsippany, everybody is requesting me to put one and a half bathroom, one full, one half. And if that's a bone of contention, we can replace that bathroom with a half bathroom. If that's a fear that town has, we can make it a half bathroom.
I think that would make me feel better.
Absolutely.
That will be better, yeah.
So is that the bathroom off of the study that you guys are?
Bathroom, it's not, it's a common bathroom.
One show and the shower.
I'm sorry, sir?
The one with the shower.
Looks like they both have showers.
No, one is, one is attached to the bedroom. That will definitely have a shower. That's a parents' bedroom. The other second bedroom on the first floor, which has a shower, but here, okay to make it a half bathroom if that provides any.
And that bathroom looks like it has a double sink.
Sir, that's just for provision. We can make it a single sink. It's a big space. That's what we're utilizing. But we are fully, okay, we are all open to your ideas. Our intent is, you know, there have been some fears that the public has. We want to make sure that all of your concerns and the public's concerns are addressed today. If there's any suggestion that will help us move forward, we are very, very open to that.
So. Make it a simple half bath.
Absolutely. We can make it a simple half bath, yes.
One sink.
And to just, to make it clear and on the record, the home office is not where anybody is going to be coming to the, to your premises other than who lives there for the purposes of that business.
That's right.
So it's not a CPA office. It's not, you're gonna be doing paperwork for an off-premises business that's in town.
That's right, sir.
Okay.
That's 100% right. There will be nobody other than the family members who will be using this office. We can testify to that.
Okay.
You know, for the board, it's better to make you comfortable that this is not an office. There is no board that this office is existing in. It's a residence.
It's just a room without any bathroom, without any closet. We don't want to make it a bedroom, because they don't need more than that. They have four bedrooms upstairs. They have one bedroom downstairs. They don't need more than that. And there is an office, and that is just for the purpose of if they want to work from home, they have that facility. That's it.
Not just to, what we understand is that this office means the people come and go like a content office, a doctor's like.
Absolutely not.
It is not that.
No business transaction will be conducted out of that. The only thing, as I mentioned, they have a grocery store, so, you know, some.
Account, they're too domestic.
They are all the domestic work. No official transactions will be carried out of that work. No person, no business meeting will be happening in that. They have a big store. They can conduct all the business meeting, all the business from that store.
So is, what's the study on the plans? Is that the office?
Study, we're calling it a study or an office, you know, the intention to put some bookshelf and that kind of table over there. That's it.
And on the second floor, you have your prayer, your prayer room?
That's right.
And four bedrooms?
That's right.
And each of those bedrooms have full bathrooms?
Three of them have. Mr. Singh's, Mr. Singh's bathroom has, therefore the sons have. One is a common bathroom. So, again, I'm sure it's a.
Guest bathroom.
If I to put it, it's a guest bathroom, and anybody who comes as a part of their prayer, they can use a common bathroom. So we just have one common bathroom.
When you designed this property, you knew what the zoning standards were, correct?
That's right, sir.
And your building coverage is significantly more than allowed. I mean, the rooms on your proposed plan are generous.
Yes.
Have you thought of making it smaller?
We did, sir. But the way we are looking at this, and it might be a small joke, but what they wanted is, they wanted the right-hand room and the left-hand room both to be the same dimension for both of their kids, and the back room. So if you look at it, there are two rooms which are big sizes, and they wanted both the sons to have equal-sized rooms. They have, they both have an attached bathroom and a walking closet. Again, that's something that all the new homes that I'm building in the town, people are demanding that. They want a walking closet and an attached bathroom.
Why, you explained the size of the rooms, and the sons get equal treatment, I guess.
That's right.
You're saying.
That's right.
And after that, what, why do the rooms need to be as large as they are?
And the third big room is for the homeowner, and the guest room and the prayer room, you know, they are, they are not that big.
What's not that big?
I mean, the prayer room, I'm benchmarking with the rooms that are already there. They have made three big rooms, one for themselves, one for each of their son, and those, that's what they wanted.
Well, wanting and a reason for are two different things.
Sir, again, the intent, I've told you, the intent is they want to have some big rooms where they can easily fit a king-size bed. They can have room for dresser. If they need to put a, you know, wardrobe dresser or something, they just want to have those provisions. If they want to put a TV on the wall, so they just wanted to provision for those things. And again, one of the key things that, that I have been doing, and I've seen some houses at Lake Shore Drive and some other other people are asking for balconies. They don't have a balcony, but they have a big walkway between the two rooms. It's just to common aesthetic purposes. Now with that, I understand the building coverage has been going down.
The size of this home is what?
The first floor is going to be around 3,000 square feet.
The whole house of the first floor?
The first floor.
Total square footage of the house is up there?
We have a family room, which is.
Total square footage?
That, I'm coming to that, sir. Let me answer that. The total family room is two-story. So we have kept it open just to give a very grand feeling. So the second floor would be.
Second floor.
Second floor.
I'm sorry, I'll just take it one.
You take the first floor.
Yes. The way the ordinance is written in Parsippany is you basically take the outside dimensions of the.
That's right.
Do the math, and then the second floor, if it's the same thing, whether you have the cathedral ceilings or not, is equal. So we know that the first floor is 3,000 square feet.
But that does include the two car garage, sir.
We're not talking about the fact that it is open through. The way the ordinance is written doesn't account for that.
So we have a.
So you have a bought a 6,000-square-foot house?
No, we don't have.
By the ordinance? You measure.
Well, by the ordinance, we're only talking about the first floor only. By the ordinance, we should not be talking about the second floor. If you're strictly want to go by the ordinance.
I'm just trying to get the size of the structure.
Sir, it is going to be 3,000 square feet minus two-car garage on the first floor. Again, two-car garage will not be considered, so it will be deducted. The living area will be around 2,500 square feet, and the living area would be less than 2,000 square feet on the second floor.
You gave the 3,000 number, though.
So 3,000 includes the total coverage on the ground, but I have to take out the garages. So living area will be less.
But you're talking living area, am I right, John?
I'm, no. I'm just talking, the way the ordinance is written. It's the outside dimensions.
Including the garages.
Can I finish? Excuse me.
If the second floor was for some reason rather indented.
Yeah.
Then you would have that second measurement. But you don't discount stairways, cathedral rooms, any of that. So we're just talking about apples. The square, the bulk of this house is a two-story house with a roughly 3,000-square-foot footprint.
3,000 square foot, yes, sir. Including the non-living garage.
Look like a 6,000-square-foot house.
It won't be, sir. We already have submitted the plans to you. The plans call for 3,000 square feet, including two-car garage. That makes 2,500 square feet of living space on first floor.
Same thing. What he is saying is he's talking about bulk.
You're just talking about the size of the building.
You are talking exactly living space.
I'm driving down the street. I see the house. The house is a two-story house. I don't know how inside is arranged, and it's basically a two-story, 3,000-square-foot footprint, and a second floor, same size, no indentation on the walls. So that's what it is. The use of it, in terms of garage space, cathedral ceilings, et cetera. That's what you were talking about to some degree.
That's right.
But you're asking for significant variances. You need to show the reason why. Six people, 6,000-square-foot house. I understand is not usable 6,000, it's something less. You need to come to grips with that.
And that's what, sir, I'm trying to explain. They are a local resident. They have been living in the town for the last 20 years. This is their opportunity to build their house. And when we look at the houses in the neighborhood, new construction has only happened on one street, which is Prince Street. All the houses have been newly constructed. In fact, I built one of the houses over there on 15 Prince Street. That's an 80-feet-wide home, because, you know, those, that's the nature of those lots. There are very few areas where we can get that big lots in Parsippany. Most of it's R4 where I work. So this is in R3 zone. So we kept the variances. We're not going into any front-end set, front or side or back variances. Other thing is, yes, the house looks wider, but if you look at it, there is a path behind the house. There is nobody whose view is going to be impeded. It's going to be a more deeper house than more of a wider house. The wider house, there was an existing house on the, on the property which was tear down to build this one. That was also a very wider house, which is already known, which is already documented here. So we are putting a wider house of the same width that was there, but we're pushing it back.
The lot is a conforming lot, correct?
That's right, sir.
So there's nothing about the lot that is undersized, correct?
No, sir.
And the lot is not oddly shaped, correct?
No, it's not, sir.
Okay. So there's nothing about the configuration of the lot that interferes with your ability to design and construct a house, correct?
You're right, sir.
So what is it about this property that makes you need a variance to construct what you need to construct? Other than the fact that your client just wants it to be this big?
I mean, the whole intent is they need to have one dedicated room. And my client is here. He's also not getting any younger. So they think in the future, if there is a bedroom downstairs, it's not gonna bother them as well. They also want that thing. The other concern that you had was about the second bathroom, which could be used. We are ready to eliminate that. We don't want that. If that's going to be a deal breaker. I think, I was not in the meeting, but what I, when I contacted Mr. Orachi, told him to go to the recording. I went to the recording. I think you told us to go to the engineer. So we went to the town engineer. We went and discussed the whole drainage plan with them. Is there anything that we are doing is going to start, maybe initiate, run off to the neighboring properties of the front or back of the road? We oversize the pit. They already proved all those designs. So yes, sir, it's a bigger house, but we have taken our, we have done our due diligence, and that's why we came to you, that based on the parameters that are defined by the various boards of township, other than the zoning board where we are seeking a variance, we are confirming to all the other, we're adhering to all the other rules of Parsippany Township. Yes, we need a variance on the, on the drainage line.
Do you know the size of the houses on your street?
Yes, sir.
What are they?
Could you tell us?
They are roughly 2,500 to 3,000 square feet on that street. And again, I've not been in any of those houses. This is all based on the research. The way I look at it. I mean, they're wider houses, but I don't know how deep they are, but I'm assuming they're 3,000, around that. I mean, most of the houses, they are in 15% building coverage rate. So I'm assuming, so 15% means some of them are ranches, some of them are by levels. So it's 20 to 50. That's what we assume. This house is definitely bigger than that. So because our first floor is around 2,300.
Did you have some involvement in the architectural drawings? Did you have input in that?
Not me, sir.
Okay. Did you have any input in that, Mr. Miola? Did you have any input in the architectural designs?
They, they went to the architect, and they worked with the architect with what they wanted to build, what they felt they needed for their family and for their parents.
Based upon the drawings, would you agree with me that it would be possible to design and construct a six-bedroom house and still conform to the zoning requirements?
I, I would agree with you that you can get the percentage down. I think you'd be hard-pressed to keep it at 15% and still have the bedroom for the parents on the first floor and your normal first floor, family room, living room, two-car garage, all those things come into play on the coverages. Some of the things you have to keep in mind is, some of it has to do with the aesthetics of the house. They have a nice front porch that's got a roof over it. That's 158 square feet. So that gets thrown into that 3,000-square-foot number. They have stairs to the basement, which I've talked to them about, and the board has concerns about that. They'll remove those stairs. They just thought it was nice to have access to the basement from the outside. So that would be another 75 square feet. So can we shave the square footage? Yes. Can we get it down to the 15%? I highly doubt it. We could probably get it into the 17, 18% range with some work.
Yeah, that will be.
I think that would be.
That will be good.
Could you please talk about the basement? I see that you have another full bathroom downstairs, and there's also a bar area.
Yes, miss. One of the concessions that we want you to make here is, I understand from the recorded that there were concerns that there is an outside stair. They wanted to replace an outside bilko door with an outside stair. So we are okay to remove that. We are okay to make the whole basement unfinished.
And the dance, the basement area?
It will be completely unfinished.
Will there be a sink in the bar area?
We are going to make it completely unfinished, completely unfinished basement with no outside stairs.
That's the stairs. I'm talking about the interior of the basement.
It will be unfinished, so we'll not put any provisions.
They're not making.
He's gonna take out any plans to finish the basement.
Exactly.
No bathroom, nothing.
Not right now. Nothing, no bathroom, no, we are okay to take the complete basement unfinished.
Including the plumbing?
The plumbing will not be there, sir, because if it does not have a bathroom. Again, our intent is that whatever it takes, if there are some concerns regarding the size of the house, size of the basement, we are okay to let those provisions be gone.
Would you be, would you be amenable to meeting with the architect and explore reducing the footprint of the house? In addition to the things that you've already said on behalf of your cousin in terms of not finishing the basement, making the bathroom on the first floor a half-bath, eliminating the outside stairs, would you be willing, do you think your cousin would be willing to go back to the architect and explore the possibility of reducing the overall size of the house?
My submission to that would be, yes, we can go back. But please, you know, just keep this in mind. This house was torn down one and a half year back. They have been, you know, working with the board, with the architect. I think this is what they want right now. There have been some provisions that we proactively made. You told us to go to the engineer. We did that. We get an okay from them. We are proactively agreeing to remove the outside stairs, unfinished the basement, make the first floor bedroom a half-bath. So that's what, you know, we will request if that would be considered.
Well, you've heard a lot of concerns from the board regarding the overall size of the house.
The, what you have to understand is, the board has to have a reason to grant the variance. And the reasons become harder the bigger the deviation is.
Right.
And the deviation of building coverage is big. So at this juncture, they don't have anything to base the reason to grant it other than it's the desire of the client. And desire of the client isn't a basis to grant the variance. So they're bound by that. So they're bound by that. So I think meeting with the architect, possibly reducing the size, getting closer to that fifteen percent, I don't disagree with Mr. Meola's statement. He probably can't get it down that size and has the same function. But I think they gotta give a little. And I think you went to the engineer, got the drainage straightened out, that's what your report says. I think that's what you were gonna testify to.
Yep.
And I think it's worthwhile for all the parties to take an extra meeting. If you don't listen to me, we won't know what we're talking about. What was I gonna say?
You got it, sir, you got it.
So are you gonna ask the board, can we carry this in order to meet with the architect and try to address the comments of the board?
I mean, I still feel that, you know, we have made.
The answer, no.
So very reasonable attempts to make a lot of provisions and concessions from our side by understanding the concerns that the board has. They'll be willing to go to the architect, but it is going to cost a lot more time and effort on each side. So what we are requesting is, if we can come to a conclusion, that will be greatly beneficial.
You didn't listen to me then. I said you haven't given any testimony for the board to grant you this variance. The attorney asked you a C one variance, do you know what that means? You do. And you agree that it doesn't apply. So we have to go to a C two, we have no testimony on C two.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question for you. If there's, if they go back and they go to their attorney, they go to their architect, they make it somewhat smaller. And we have the case again, and there's people, you know, citizens that are gonna say they're against it. Does it make any sense to get some of that on the record tonight to see what the neighbor's objection is? So that these people don't go get the house adjusted and then them face the same
Same consequences.
Consequences, that at least streamline that somewhat, let the public be heard, let them voice if they're for or against in some manner, so that these people know what they have to do to maybe appease their neighbors.
If you ask me the question, I think that would be fine. I still don't know that we have an answer to the question as to whether the applicant wants to come back.
Right, okay.
I think we need an answer to that question first, before we know where the rest of this hearing tonight is.
Absolutely, so sir, one thing that we are proposing, and I was just discussing with Mr. Meola, by taking the, we have two variances here, one is for the building coverage, second one is for the impervious coverage. So we are more than thirty percent. We will make sure that impervious coverage variance doesn't set in. We'll reduce the size of the deck, if that means we need to eliminate the deck, make smaller steps, whatever needs to be done on the deck size, we will comply on the impervious coverage. That's one thing that we will do. By reducing the stairs, we are already shaving off seventy five square feet, which is bringing it by another zero point five percent down. So that's something we already proposed. We haven't given you the revised plan, but if you want, we can also submit that plan to the board wherein we are, by doing this only, we're shrinking the house. But if you want, we can still shrink a little more and make sure that we come across less than twenty percent. If that's something that board will consider, we are ready to make that adjustment too. Because now since I'm shaving the size of the bathrooms, I might squeeze the bottom home office a little smaller. That will also result in the upstairs being smaller, so I can try to bring it under twenty percent. That's something you can.
Also the bedrooms on the second floor.
They will get shrunk if we shrink the first floor.
Automatically.
Yeah.
So you're agreeing, then you go back to the architect, get this picture changed, come back, but I think you want to hear what your neighbors have to say.
Absolutely, at the same time, I kind of agree with what Mr. Tosco, it says, you know, where does it end? We don't want to be in a loop, that we come back with nineteen point five percent and then say we have the same concerns. So we want the board to be pleased, considerate of the time and effort that has been going from all the parties here. So we just want a resolution. And as we said, in good faith, we have proposed a few ideas, if that makes sense. Because, and again, there is no benchmark, or there is no rule that I can follow, but you know, the same board has.
I'm not getting a clear answer to my question. Okay, so.
So we are bidding, we'll come back with less than twenty percent. We'll come back with less than twenty percent.
Less than twenty percent is.
Are there, are there any questions from the board to this?
We'll come back with a smaller house, with a hundred percent.
I have, I'm trying to look at your plans, but I have old eyes. So maybe you could tell me what the size of the bedrooms are that are on here.
They're going to revise anyway.
Yeah, presently, the upstairs bedrooms, bedrooms two and three are fifteen by twenty. Naster bedroom, which is shown as bedroom five, is, looks like eighteen by twenty. Then the bedroom four, which is the guest bedroom, is coming up, if I'm reading it correctly, about thirteen by, I think that's a sixteen, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And then the prayer room is, it looks like thirteen by sixteen.
Okay. Do you, Mr. Meola, did you have any other testimony you wanted to offer? My thinking is, maybe if we get done with your testimony tonight, we wouldn't necessarily need you to come back. I know we kind of skipped around between the witnesses, so I don't know if you had anything else that you wanted to say about the engineering issue.
Was that some of this building coverage is because of the aesthetics of the house. You have a front porch, which is very pretty, but it's got a roof on it, so it counts on the building coverage. That front porch is almost a hundred and sixty square feet. Then taking what those stairs that go to the basement is another seventy five square feet. So they can bring the house down by two hundred and thirty five square feet, if I did it right in my head. You know, right off the top. And then obviously, they're gonna have to shave it more to get you to the number that everybody seems to be comfortable with. You know, and the deck in the back is what's causing the total, not building, total lot coverage variance. But that deck is large. In my mind, it was large from the beginning, but that's what they wanted. We could cut that deck down to keep us under the thirty percent number. Because between what we're cutting out, plus reducing the deck, we can make it work, and you'd still have a nice deck. Probably, I'm gonna guess, in the ballpark of fifteen by twenty maybe, which is still a nice sized deck.
Yes, it is.
And you, you're comfortable with the change in the drainage issues and your.
Yes, I talked to the engineering department. We're on the same page with that. And, you know, they think it's gonna be fine, especially as was pointed out, this property isn't surrounded by other lots. We've got houses on either side of us, but behind us is the town park in Ballfield, which is a wide open space. So it doesn't have the same feeling as being crammed in there as you would if you tried to squeeze this in the middle of the lot and everybody around you had fifteen thousand square foot lots.
Okay. Do you have anything else you wanna add?
Pardon?
Do you have anything else you wanna add right now?
No.
Okay. Now, why don't you open it up for questions to Mr. Meola now, and then question. I'm sorry, it was your last name again.
Anyone in the audience have questions of the testimony that we have heard this evening? Please come up.
Questions of these two witnesses regarding the testimony that they gave this evening. After that's done, you're going to have an opportunity to make a statement either in support of or against the application. So hold on, if you have a question about the testimony, you need to come up and use the microphone and identify yourself and ask your question. So this gentleman right here is first. Come to the microphone, please.
This one does wanna come out.
And please state your name.
Tim Wyman, Eight Ionic Court, Parsippany.
Wait, how do you spell your name?
W Y M A N.
Okay, you have a questions, not, not in favor of or against, but questions of either of the ways.
Yeah, I would just like to know, I haven't heard in the testimony, what is the floor area ratio?
I don't show a floor ratio, I don't know if Parsippany has been there.
I never heard that.
They do not.
Do you know what the average floor area ratio is for a single family home in any zone or jurisdiction?
It differs from town to town, every town makes, has their own number on the floor area ratio.
But you don't have it here.
I don't have it, because we didn't calculate it, because it's not necessarily in Parsippany.
What is the square footage of the property?
The square footage of the lot is fifteen thousand square feet. The proposed home is in the ballpark of thirty one eighty square feet, which comes out to twenty one percent.
Wait, oh, that's the first floor.
Right.
Right.
The bulk of the building, which we spent too much time on.
Yes.
Is roughly.
About six thousand.
Six thousand square feet, so you take six thousand over fifteen is.
That, that number I can give you. That comes out to point four.
The average is twenty five to thirty five percent. That is what you will find in most towns that have a.
Is that a question?
You're testifying.
You can testify, just.
Do you agree that forty percent exceeds the average of most towns that do have a floor area ratio requirement?
I don't know. I can think of towns that have.
You can ask the question.
Fifty percent floor area ratios. So it differs from town to town.
What is the height of this building?
Thirty one and a half feet.
What is the height of each home on either side and across the street?
On either side, I'm looking at it, they look like, from an aerial view, they're ranches, so they're probably in the ballpark of twenty, maybe twenty five. Across the street, across the street, looks like ranches also. But I'm not sure, I'm going from an aerial photo, trying to see what the floor looks like.
So you would agree that this property kind of towers over the neighboring properties?
It's, it has a higher ratio. Point is that tomorrow, every single one of those homes will come in for building permit, put a second floor on it and be totally compliant. It meets the ordinance, the ordinance is thirty five foot maximum, and you comply with that.
Does anyone else have any questions of either of the witnesses? You can come forward, you can use the microphone. Wait, you can come, come a little forward.
He can't take the microphone.
State your name.
I'm Alexa Lynch, I live at Nine Homer Street.
L Y N C H?
L Y N C H.
Okay.
At the last meeting, as well as this meeting, initially, it was stated that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a house still on the property?
Not anymore, the client got carried away and took the house down.
Okay, so why did you say earlier in the meeting that there is?
Because I didn't know he had gone out and demolished it without asking his engineer, because I would advise him to keep it.
Okay. And in addition to that, how many cars will there be in the house?
I mean.
Okay, at the last meeting, it was three, so.
Who answered that question? Just, I just wanna make sure the record's.
At least that's what it sounded like to me.
Mr. Sane answered that question, okay. Do you have another question?
And again, how many people will be living in the house?
Six.
Okay, 'cause at the last, oh, wait, am I not allowed to rebut?
You can ask a question.
Okay. Why at the last meeting was it the grandparents, which is two, the parents, husband and wife, four, the two sons, six, and it was quoted their potential wives, which would be eight?
Because. Because in their tradition, it's very common for families to live together.
How many families would that be?
It would be the two sons, possibly, plus the grandparents, plus the other, plus the mother and father. You know, the code doesn't prohibit that, as long as you're living as a single entity, you're allowed. It's considered a family by definition.
Okay, and what is the exact square footage of the home?
First floor square footage.
No, the total.
Thirty one eighty nine. Total square footage is about six thousand.
Okay, why in the plans is it over seven thousand?
I don't know which plans you're talking about.
At the bottom, proposed versus previous, you can see.
I apologize, I don't see it on the sheets that I have.
Full coverage, seven thousand.
Total.
Oh, yeah.
Driveway. That, that number came, we have it marked specifically for the architect. So he's saying it's seventy seven eighty one.
Does that include the, that square footage includes the driveway?
Driveway, no. I don't know, I will, I will get the answer for you next time, I will question the architect, how he came up with seventy seven eighty one. You know, maybe he was counting the basement, I don't know.
Hi, my name's Anthony Castellucci, it's C A S T E L L U C C I, and I live at eleven Homer Street. My question was about the.
Speak up.
Oh, sorry, yeah. My question was about the attic space, or at least that third level. It's pretty high, so I was wondering what the plan is for the, that space.
There's, there's no plan for the attic. There's no stairway to the attic, it just has a hatchway to get up to.
And the windows? And the windows?
I'm being told something that I didn't realize. They're telling me that there's a walk up stairs.
There is a walker patio, and in the building, where we submit the plans to the building department, the plans will clearly say the attic is a non-vivable space, it will never have a sheet from, all that is submitted. Parsippany does not allow us to create an attic which is non-vivable.
And it needs to be that high?
If the, the way this house is being designed, and again, this is a ten feet first floor, nine feet second floor, and there is a one feet of connection in between. Simple, there's a connection and whatever is a five foot, I'd say it's a divide. I think this is the one feet, so we are not exceeding any variance of the.
It's very common today, especially people like, homes with higher pitch roofs, they look prettier. So sometimes, just because of the aesthetics that they want, and the architect wants to get a high pitched roof instead of low squatty roof, like a four on twelve, as my house is, it looks different. It's just an appearance.
Nora, are you picking both of them up on the microphone?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, but again, the house does comply with the code. Town ordinance is thirty five foot, and we are at thirty one and a half, if I remember correctly, yes.
Thank you.
I just wanna ask a question again, the access to the attic is via what? A stairway or a pull down?
I'll let the builder ask.
Because I'm looking on the architectural plan.
It's a walker patio, sir.
What?
It's a walker patio from the second floor rather than.
Where is that staircase shown on the plan?
It's on the. In the loft area.
It's important for the purposes of the record that the audience members try to keep their comments to themselves?
It's in the loft area, sir.
How would that work if you have hip roof all the way around? You would be.
So we'll be landing in the middle of the, I think that would be the only space where a person can stand, rest of the attic will be pitching. And again, a very common practice is, I have built house in the same neighborhood, fifteen Prince Road, where there is a walker patio, I am building two more houses, we go by zoning board, we clearly certify.
Sir, I appreciate you telling us what you have built, but we're concerned about this plan.
Sure.
Is it something you would consider eliminating and having a pull down?
Just a pull down.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, the intent is, as we are going under twenty percent now, I have to chop off. So might as well chop up this loft.
Definitely.
So, I don't wanna interpret the residents' concerns, but in hearing cases like this, most of the time, they're concerned about the home becoming a
multifamily.
Multifamily. Now, you haven't shown another kitchen, we've had that before, but residents are concerned about it becoming a multifamily, and then eight cars in the beginning, out of hand. So that's why, I think you probably have a lot of concern out there. And anything you could do to allay those fears? Maybe the basement is a good step, the attic not having steps up there to prove that you're not gonna be eventually building up there to put more people up there.
Absolutely. And as I said, we wanted to have this meeting in good faith. We came with, that we will eliminate or shorten the deck, just to make sure that we don't set up another variance on the impervious coverage. We are going to make, bring this house under twenty percent. We already have proposed eliminating the stairs outside, so there is no outside access. The only way to get into the basement is through the middle of the house. And while this house looks big, we also try to explain, and I know it doesn't help, but in their family and living area, it is a forty by, you know, twenty five area, which they have built second floor. We have to put a lot of metal beams, but that's the grand look. second floor, we have to put a lot of metal beams, but that's the grand look they wanted for their house. So whatever it takes to bring it under 20 percent, if that means that we have to take out that attic stairs, walk-up attic stairs, and make it a pull-down, we will do that.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to-
I'd just like to say, I agree with Mr. Chadwick, I looked at it, I don't know how they would put that stairs in, because it's in the gable, the end of the roof that's hip. You're going to hit the ceiling before you get to the top of the steps.
Anyone else in the audience?
Grab a mic.
Karen Fisher, 12 Homer Street. I just wanted to know if you knew the size of the square footage of the house that was previously there?
I believe the existing home was in the ballpark of about 16, 17 hundred square feet. Seventeen ninety-one.
On the bus, any of the two stories?
Yeah, it was a two-story.
It was a six-bedroom house, but they had tore it out.
That was my question, is if they knew it was a six-bedroom house there previously?
Yes.
And did you know that it's a violation of New Jersey occupancy law to have more than a single family and two other persons living in a residence at any one time for a single family zoned home?
More than two people?
One single, one single family, parents and their children, and two additional people.
I'll admit, I don't know that the architectural code has that in it, but I will tell you that the definition of a family by court has determined that if you're living together as an entity, you don't have to be related. I can read you the town code, because they changed their code to match it.
We discussed this today with the architect and the engineer. I asked them to pull up the board from the township website, what is the definition of a family? So with that, you know, we saw that they can still be considered, while they're living with the parents and the two wives, still be considered as a single family.
But with the two wives?
No, they were not wives.
But when eventually?
I'm going to, let me read you exactly, this is exactly the definition out of the precipice ordinance. Family, one or more persons, customary living together as a single housekeeping entity, whether or not to each other by birth, marriage, or as distinguished from a group occupancy as a hotel. So as long as you're living together as an entity, the way the courts have determined that you're a family, if this whole board wants to live together in one house, it's a family, as long as you only have one kitchen, and you're sharing the same eating facilities. That's just, unfortunately, that's the way the law's gone. I don't say I necessarily agree with that definitively, but that's what we have to live with. Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Hi, it's me, I'm back, Alexa Lynch. So does that mean there will be possibly an unlimited amount of people that could live in this home, as long as they're an entity?
That's the way the state court has determined it, yes. The answer is here, everybody can do that, you know.
The answer is no. It's not unlimited, there's an occupancy requirement, fire code-
Yes.
-that brought out.
Yes.
So that's not the answer.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Anyone else? Does the board have any other questions? Mr. Madam Chair, I didn't ask you if you had any questions.
Again, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't review the single-family plans, so I'm not entirely familiar with this. I think I did see them last week, or last time, and the only, the question that comes to mind is, the building height is computed as the, from the midpoint of the gable to the average grade.
And I didn't see any average grade calculations on the plans, and I didn't see any topography,
because the average grade is computed six feet away from the building. And I didn't see anything to justify the building-
I can add that to the plan.
Yeah.
That we do have a grading plan on the right-hand side, but I'll add the average grade.
Okay.
Nora, may we have a date?
Hold on, I'm sorry. I think- Do you want, even though you're coming back, do you want the benefit of maybe hearing from some of the neighbors about what their concerns are?
And we want to go back with some resolution. We don't want it to be an endless loop. We don't want it that way. It has to be cleared. We have made our decisions, we are more than happy to understand what conditions are. In good faith, we try to incorporate some of them. If there are others that will help elevate the fears of neighbors, we'll try to do that. So absolutely, we are giving this sense. And having said that, we also want to know, I mean, we can put a restriction to that, that they can give us a technical rule, that we will not miss rostered persons.
Okay, you're going, to me, you're kind of saying two things to me. That you actually want a vote tonight with conditions, or you want to come back? You've got to make up your mind.
We want a vote with the conditions.
You want to vote tonight?
With the conditions, with the condition we are proposing.
I understand, you may get it denied.
You do, you do understand, you haven't given one reason for the variances.
Okay, sir, we'll wait to hear from the, from the public, what are the views, and then we, that can give us some time to make our decision. But can we at least hear from-
Okay, so you're still undecided about whether you want to come back or not?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, then that is going to put this board in a position where they're going to have to hear from everybody that wants to speak, either in support of or in opposition to this application tonight.
And will that give us an opportunity to come back and let you know part of the season after?
Sure, but this, this board is now going to open it up to the public for anyone that wants to speak, either in support of or in opposition to this application.
Absolutely.
And do they expect the vote to be clear?
I, just, I don't think they're deciding yet.
Okay, so they want to hear them, and then decide?
It sounds like that's what they want.
Okay.
They want to change any plans accordingly, they can-
My intent is that, you know, where does it end?
Okay, I get it.
Multiple other loops, we proposed a lot of suggestions, which we felt were good. Some of them that you recommended, like walk-up attic shrinking the size of the house, trying to getting under 20 percent, we're looking to that. So that is what we were hoping, and I, we wanted to plead that the board, please consider it as our good faith suggestions, and we are still willing to work more, but we just want to know, you know, how does it end, and where does it end? We don't want to come into multiple meetings and then get pushed back.
Yeah, yeah.
Last thing, we were told to go to the engineer, we went to them. Of course, if we have a smaller house with the same drainage, we'll be okay. We went to them.
So, if I, I just want to make sure I understand the applicant's position, okay? You're willing to make the changes that you've suggested, make the, first, the bathroom for the study a half-bath?
Yes, sir.
No basement, no furnace?
No, and not finishing the basement, including not putting plumbing in the basement?
Yes.
Removing the outside stairs?
Yes.
Attic stairs?
Removing the attic stairs.
Walk-up attic stairs, yes. We have pull-down, but we will not have walk-up.
Reducing the impervious coverage to, so it's conforming at 30 percent?
Yes.
Reducing the building coverage to what?
Under 20 percent.
Under 20 percent. And reducing the size of the deck? To what?
So then we will limit it to, it's a very massive oversized deck, we want to make it under 300 stairs.
Overall, you have to make it under 20 percent.
Overall, the building cover is 20 percent, impervious will-
So will that leave you with one variance only?
That's it.
It'll be-
No, they still need a variance for building-
Won't that be the only one?
Yes.
They're getting rid of the impervious, they're going to reduce that, they're getting rid of the deck to get rid of that, they're going from 21.25 for less than 20, that'll be the only one left.
That would be the only variance left?
Yes.
Okay.
And you want to, you want to, you want to agree to all those conditions-
Yes.
-without speaking to your architect first?
Sir, we will make sure that any plan that is submitted, will be conforming to all those conditions. We can, we are okay to put it in the, if I get an approval, there will be no walk-up attic stairs, all the things that we discussed, they will be in the-
But when you say that, you're, but when he says that, it sounds like he's, wants to vote tonight.
It's-
Do you agree with me?
It sounds like you want to vote tonight with all those conditions, and you want the board to make, to take that vote without seeing a revised set of plans.
Johnson, the only I want to correct is, on the basement, you said no plumbing. They have the mechanical equipment down there, so we're going to need some small amount of plumbing, otherwise, mechanical isn't going to work.
I was referring to the basement.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure it's clear on the record.
No bathroom, no bathroom, none of those things, but whatever-
Maybe a water softener, whatever.
Water softener, like-
Water softener.
Typically, we have connections in the basement, so water and sewer connection will be there, the mechanical will be there, but there won't, there'll be water heaters, there'll be water softener, but no bathroom, no-
Unfinished, basically unfinished.
Unfinished.
I think the board would be much more comfortable with you coming back with a revised set of plans.
Before we-
I think it's only fair to us that we see exactly what we're voting on. I know you want speed, but you want right, and you want a house.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe this board will approve until we see the new plans. We have to see the new plans, and the public also see the new plans.
You have to hear from the public first.
Yes, we're going to hear from the public tonight, as to their concerns, in opposition or in support of this application.
Okay, let's hear the public.
Fine. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support or opposition, in opposition to this application? Please come forward.
I have a question. If I have a question-
Please come forward.
Will they answer now, or did I need to speak before you opened it?
Hurry up.
You can come up.
I have no problem answering questions, so if you have a question, I'd be happy to answer, if I can.
Got to grab a mic and tell us who you are.
Richard Fiorentino, 32 Homer Street.
Spell your last name, please.
Yes, F like Frank, I O R E N T I N O.
And I'm sorry, what is your, your address again?
What? 32 Homer Street. So, I heard the gentleman in the-
Yeah.
Turbine, this, sitting here, say, at one point, two bedrooms on the first floor, but then I heard other times that it was one bedroom.
It's one bedroom and a den. A study, a little bit, a study, den, whatever you want to call it, they use it for a little office, for their business.
If you record this, I'm 99 percent sure I heard him say two bedrooms at one point. My question is, the bedrooms have, each have their own full bathroom, and the study has a full bathroom with a double sink, but the one bedroom on that floor is for the grandparents, right? Their bathroom has one sink, the study has two sinks.
Not anymore.
We just-
Not anymore.
It's been the main-
Oh, now it's going to be a half-bath?
Yeah.
All right.
Changed to a half-bed.
All right.
And that was really the hall bed for anybody who's there, if they have a function-
Sure.
That's the bathroom that all people-
You would agree that a full bath doesn't, isn't necessary for a bedroom, right? You know, my, I have, my children have bedrooms with no bathroom attached, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of houses with-
Right, so this study will have a half bathroom. There's no closet in the room, but there is a walk-in closet immediately outside of the room. To me, that's suspicious, to say the least, like, to avoid calling it a bedroom. Okay, well, my contention is that it could very easily be another bedroom. Not to mention the loft, which I'm not looking at the right ones right now, here I am, the loft also has a walk-in closet right there, which closets in rooms, to me, means bedroom. Questions?
Can I answer that, sir?
Yes.
First of all, again, it's a very cultural thing.
Use the microphone.
There is no walk-in closet on the first floor, the only closet they have is basically shoe closet and a closet to hang their coats. As a part of the culture to which this family belongs, they don't take the shoes inside the house, they keep it, they have created a walk-in closet where they can keep the shoes and hang their coats. So it's not a walk-in closet, it's a coat closet. Secondly, the den does not have an attached bathroom, it is a common half bathroom, so that whenever somebody comes to their home, they don't get into their parents. We already agreed to make it a one-sink, half bathroom, I'm going to shrink the size of that bathroom to make sure that we are under 20 percent.
We are looking at the same plans.
Yes, sir.
That says right there, W I C, which means walk-in closet.
Okay, this is a mistake from an architect, my apologies will get it corrected, but please understand, this is the only closet that they have where they can keep their shoes and closets and coats.
And not to interrupt, that's why we need a new set of plans, because I think it will make your neighbors feel better.
Got it.
You're doing a lot to get them on your side, but nothing's concrete, and you're, more importantly, or as importantly, the board might feel, feel more favorably.
No, absolutely, all these are very valid points. I think we are also leaning towards coming back to the board with all these changes. Some of them have been typos, we just want to make sure that all of them are corrected, that there is, the board and the general public feels comfortable about it. And I hope the board is able to see that we are very open to all the changes here, just to get this thing going. With the same spirit, we'll go back, make these changes, what are these nomenclature changes which are causing these concerns, we'll eliminate that.
Okay, do you have any other questions, sir?
Two, that walk-in closet or closet that you're referring to, looks fairly large for shoes and coats. I don't know the size, the square footage of that closet.
There is no restriction to size of the closet. If I build a house on a 60 by 100 lot, I generally put two walk-in closets in a confirming house. Here, we have only one, which is a little bigger, just for shoes and closets. We'll call it the shoe and coat closet, we'll call it a coat closet.
The second question I have is-
To answer your question, walk-in closet has a width dimension, and looks like 8.6, eight and a half feet, and it almost looks like a perfect square, so it's maybe eight by eight, it's a natural question.
And a coat closet.
So at least 64 square feet.
And there is no other coat closet on the first floor, so if-
But you're saying that 64-square-foot closet is not a walk-in closet, correct?
It is not meant to be a walk-in closet, it is a coat closet. I think it's there, they just wanted a bigger closet, now since we are shaving the house, I'm sure it can be reduced, but if we can nick, keep-
You see, my position, my, my opinion, though, is that a closet of that size, adjacent to a study with a bathroom, could easily be construed as a bedroom.
I hear what you're saying, we have a little closet.
Because it's not in the room.
It is separate, yeah, it's not in the room.
You know what, we're going around on a plan that's not going to exist anymore. That's what, I think you pointed out-
But I'm, I only have this to go by.
It's opposite, adjacent to the entrance door.
Front door, yeah.
So they can come in and go right to the closet, take your shoes off, take your clothes off and change, you know, and it's a comfortable area, I'm not going to argue with you on that, you know, but that's the reason why it's in that location, I'm sure that's what the architect-
Okay. My last question is, the loft also shows that it has a W I C or walk-in closet.
In the hall, yes.
That's a hallway closet, yeah.
The architect took all the dead space and made something out of it, is what he did?
And now, since anyway, we're going to redo the walk-up attic, I think that would be renamed as a hallway closet.
Sure.
And, or maybe it will get eliminated as we are going under 20 percent now.
Because of the way the doorway opens, it's in the hallway, but if the doorway opened from within the loft area, that would be a closet entered, opening into the loft-
In the loft.
Or the bedroom, or the bedroom.
You know, the architect just threw things where he had dead space and-
Right, but just because the door is in a different place, it's in, it's not in the room, so it's a loft, but if the door was facing the loft-
But sir, we'll be applying for building permits, we cannot be changing doors like that, we'll be applying, the building inspectors are going to look at everything, how we build it.
Sir, just as we've said-
It just seems like it's to circumvent the number of-
I understand what you're saying, but the plans will be changed.
Yeah, well, we'll see what they will be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyone else would like to come up?
Hi, Karen Elsman, 12 Trojan Avenue.
Are you asking a question?
Spell your last name.
Um, a comment or a question?
Can you spell your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, E L S is in Sam, M A N.
And I'm sorry, 12 what?
Trojan, you're going to ask, we love our idols.
Are you asking a question or making a statement? I just need to know the answer to that.
Well, I, I think that, um, you know, it, it seems really good tonight, you know, everybody's like going through, we'll agree, we'll agree, and that's wonderful, if that's how the world really works, and I'm just concerned because everything just so...
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, if you're making a statement either in support of or in opposition to, I need to swear you in, that's the only reason I'm asking. If you're asking a question, go ahead and ask your question, if you're making a statement, I need to swear you in.
Want to do both? Just to...
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, 100%. It was lovely, everybody agreed, and, you know, it's a lovely neighborhood, we love it, the, the park behind it, and, um, you know, based upon the backyard area, so it's great, and we so appreciate how wonderful you agree to everything. My concern is, how do we know? Because yes, we can still come back with the plans, and, and the last thing you mentioned was the building inspector, but everybody knows, like, you know, sometimes you have to redo this part, like, your home, nobody's going to see it, how do we know? That's my question.
Well, hopefully, when he does, when they do the, the new plans, we will be able to see it, just as we will be able to see us.
I understand.
And that goes for anybody, but that goes for anybody, to be honest with you.
No, I know that.
So...
I know that, that's what I'm saying, how do we know? Even after the plans, what happens after?
Well, the building department wouldn't give a, a CO to plans that weren't, that the house was not built to those plans, the, the city comes to the, inspects what the plans say to what is built. Now, what, when they get a CO and when they close, that's, you know, but you could have finished your basement without telling anybody, this guy could have done something else.
Whoa, 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 I did not do that. Oh, wow. Oh, my God. Guys, I did not do that.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I didn't... I did, I did not do that.
It's okay, all right, we're not...
Not do that.
You're fine, we're just, Billy, you're okay.
Yeah, no idea.
You're okay?
You're, you're bleeding, so please...
It's okay, okay.
Yeah, you are, so...
I have a personal tissue, any tissue?
Understanding that they come, that it looks like they'll be coming back with new plans, do you have any other comments?
No, I hope, I hope that it all works out just like everything is yet.
Here, I'll have your tissue.
Thank you, all good, thanks, man. Uh, no, I trust, thank you. Here's hoping.
Thank you.
Are you here to make a comment?
I'm recording myself.
No, I, I do that, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
They just state your name, spell your last name, and tell us where you live.
Hi, my name is Kathy Lynch, L Y N C H, and I live at 9 Homer Street. Before I begin, maybe I could just hand this out to you. This will show you what the current neighborhood looks like.
Tell us what you're handing us.
Yes, I'm going to tell you right now.
You got only one, or you got one?
I'm going to give you one.
Okay.
Um, this is a rendering of what the current neighborhood looks like, as well as a picture of the home that was taken down, and what the lot currently looks like.
You have multiple copies of that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we're going to mark this, we're actually going to mark this 01.
This is just the majority of the homes on Homer Street.
Do you have more down there?
Is there another one? Bernie, may I have one, please?
One of them here.
You know what?
We have one.
I have one.
You got one?
We have one.
You want one?
Okay, so these look like there's a number of photographs on a single page, is that right?
Yes, I just noted every address there, and there's no home at 2 Homer Street, I guess it's a double lot.
Okay, did you take these photographs?
Um, they are off of Google.
Okay, and do these photographs accurately and fairly depict the configuration of the houses in the, in the neighborhood?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just want to start by saying that I live directly across the street from where Mr. Singh wants to build his home, um, my husband and I bought our home, we were 24 years old, and we lived there for 35 years, some of my neighbors have lived in their home for 50 and 60 years, and we bought our home because we loved the community, all the light homes and the mature trees, they were built by the same builder, so everything is pretty much uniform, if you can refer to the picture that I gave you. We all know Mr. Singh is proposing building a huge home, and what's bothering me, after listening to everything, we need to again look at the front of this home, this is a gigantic home that is going to be in the middle of our street, when I open my shades in the morning, I am going to be looking at a hotel. This home, yes, he's sitting here saying he's going to shave off this, he's going to shave off that, we're talking about minimal square footage, just to make note, we had said earlier that, this is a 4,000 square foot home, but it's astonishing that it's 7,781 total square feet for all floors. The proposed building coverage of 21 and a quarter, the house torn down was 12.6%. The impervious coverage, the house turned, torn down was 23%. We could sit here and say we're going to take a staircase off, we're going to eliminate a sink inside, and we're going to take, we're going to put in a pull-down attic stairs, what is that doing for us when we have to stare at this home that does not belong in the middle of the neighborhood? He was stressing the fact that he's going to shorten the deck, and he also mentioned something to the effect that there's nobody really being infringed upon because there's houses next door and there's a park in the backyard. There is a beautiful park in the backyard with a walking path, people are going to be walking around in this beautiful neighborhood and all of a sudden seeing this McMansion in the middle, center of the street. Again, we're referencing all these little cuts to the plans, but please look at the front of that house again, that looks like a three-story house with a 32-foot roof that is going to be next to a, two houses over a ranch that's sitting at a 15, 16-foot roof, and also a tri-level, bi-level, that's not even a 20, 22-foot roof, and he's going end to ends on the property. It's not like, okay, he's, he's 40 feet back from the street, but he's also 11 feet from the property line, he's taking the current, or rather, say, the previous owner's footprint and extending it to the maximum. The main concern I have, and I'm sure a lot of my neighbors have, is this home does not belong in our neighborhood, just like some of you board members had mentioned the last time, this is not a home that belongs in our neighborhood, this is a house that should be built in an area where he bought a piece of land and he has it made and set up and built along comparable homes, we're sitting here saying it's okay for him to come in, we're going to grant him a variance to ruin our neighborhood, that's what we're saying. This is not a single-family home. A single-family home with that few many people living in there, and again, like we said, we're going to see new plans, how do we know what's going to happen later on inside that home? Right now, we currently do not have one car that parks on the street overnight in our neighborhood. Earlier in the testimony from the last meeting, we talked about having our prayer groups and possibly using the basement for when we had large family gatherings because we had a large extended family. Once this variance is granted and this house is put through, there's no going back, because it's just going to set a precedent for the next person to come in and say, you know what, he got his variance for this house, we can build another one. So I hope, I really hope that when you're sitting there, you'll think about me when I'm opening my blind in the morning, because I've lived here for 35 years and have loved my neighborhood, raised my children here, along with a lot of these wonderful people, and we feel as though we are not being heard and that our entire life has just been uprooted. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up?
Use the microphone, please. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and tell the board where you live, please.
My name's Inez Prost, P R O S T, I live at 11 Gresham Street, and just looking at not all these concessions that have been made tonight, but looking at what I had seen before, it looks like we're having a bed and breakfast, okay? And a bed and breakfast should not be in our regular neighborhood, that's it.
What was your address?
11...
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? State your name, spell your last name, and tell the board where you live.
Claudia Galveo, G A L V A O, 8 Paris Place.
I'm sorry, what, what street?
Paris Place.
Paris.
And I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Claudia.
Claudia?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to make a, it's not really a statement, it's just a reminder, I, you mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, the reason why does New Jersey have, what is the legislature regarding the C virus, in order to get it approved, that it seems like it's very hard to understand on their side, it is the proof of hardship. In order for a virus to be approved, especially a C virus, you have to prove hardship, not by the land, not by irregular law, right? You don't have any of that, so it's just the will of big, building something bigger, again, like Kathy said, that has nothing to do with our neighborhood. I moved into this neighborhood four years ago, in the middle of a pandemic, I live on the cul-de-sac in the neighborhood, my children are 15, 13, and 12, they look at that park like a heaven, they go down the street, they play their bikes, like they said, there's really no cars in the street, it's only really our single-family homes that everybody knows everybody, and we have the peace of going to the park, let it be to walk at 6:00 AM with our dogs, or 5:00 in the afternoon with our kids riding our bike. Then again, even my daughter asks, Mom, what happened here? And I showed her the picture of what the house that is planning to be built there, and she goes, wow, it looks like one of the hotels we stayed in, Wywood. It is that feeling, and unfortunately, it's sad that they don't understand that the proof of hardship is due to the land you are building in, the irregular lots, not simply the will that I want something bigger and better.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak?
Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, and tell the board where you live, please.
Rusi Gandhi, G A N D I.
Spell your first name, please.
Can you, can you spell your first name, please?
R U S I.
And what's your address?
56 Ridge Drive, Montville.
Montville?
Mm-hmm. Any...
What would you like to say?
Okay. What I wanted to say, damn near real estate of all, 40 years, and number one, then when they knocked down their house and put up a new homes, that is better for the neighborhood, because that increased the value of the property, and secondly, better for the town, where it gives a more revenue, so there should not be any conflict there, and secondly, I have seen, I have sold around 10 houses in that, on the, in that section, from Dolly, Paris, former, former two of us, including this one, in Ulysses, so what I'm saying to you all, that they should meet all the requirements of the, for the square footage, but there should not be any discussion about their building a big home or like that, because the lot, the lot size and the building size, they were done according to the plan, so that is my...
Are you Mr. Singh's realtor?
Yes, I was just... Rusi Gandhi from Remax.
I, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes.
Okay, do you have anything else to say?
No, so I would suggest, suggest that the, you should consider the application with all the changes. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to get up and speak?
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? State your names, spell your last name, and tell the board your address.
Tim Wyman, 8 Iona Court.
Parsippany, W Y M A N. Uh, I have a prepared comment I'd like to read, um, but before I do that, I, I'm a little concerned that, I feel like the board is giving the applicant the impression that if they come back with new plans that are under 20%, it's a slam dump, it'll be approved, and that's not the case, am I correct?
I think the board would have to consider the plans as...
You would have to vote on it.
They, they haven't seen any amended plans at this point.
But I feel like you're giving them the, I feel like they may be going away with the impression that if they're at 19 and a half percent, it's going to be approved.
I said to the applicant, you haven't given any, any testimony in support of this variance at least three times, I'm now saying it to you.
No, and I heard that loud and clear.
And the board knows exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, all right, I'd like to read my statement, if that's okay. I live at 8 Iona Court, Parsippany, my wife and I have lived at this address for the last 46 years. We are not within the 200-foot notification zone, however, we're just two blocks away from the subject property. I appear before you this evening in strong opposition to this application. Over recent years, we have witnessed many undesirable changes in the neighborhood that we were originally attracted to 46 years ago, with little or no local government enforcement. These include unpermitted work being performed on properties, illegal two-family homes, illegal short-term rentals, up to 10 automobiles for one home with cars parked in the street all hours of the day and night, uh, creating obstructed ru, uh, views for vehicles, and finally, a lot of deferred maintenance. I recognize that this board does not have the power of enforcement, but those that do in this town are failing. Uh, this board does, however, have the opportunity tonight, or perhaps next meeting, uh, to prevent yet another addition to this growing list. Coming from a real estate background, I have a, I am a strong advocate for property rights, I'm also sensitive to issues that seek to maintain the visual harmony and character of the neighborhood. The application you are being asked to consider proposes a structure which is totally inharmonious with the neighborhood and the surrounding properties. Strict adherence to the current zoning requirements would reduce this impact considerably. The applicant seeks to deviate from the permitted maximum building coverage by an amount approaching 50%. In my opinion, they have not met the requirements of NJ SA 40 colon 55D 7DC, there is nothing about the size, shape, or topography of this property that would cause an undue hardship on the owner in developing the property within the zoning ordinance. They have also, in my opinion, failed to persuasively, or at all, meet the negative criteria requirements that the board, uh, for the board to approve this application. The applicant, in their own application, claims that they have attempted to purchase neighboring properties without success. I think that demonstrates that they truly do understand this neighborhood, and this lot in particular, is not suitable for the type of structure they seek to build. There are other zones and lots where this structure would fit nicely, but they chose this neighborhood. We welcome them to the neighborhood, but they must be required to build within the limitations they should have been aware of when they made this investment. The application refers to a prayer room, the size of this structure and additional undedicated space allows for much more than a simple prayer room. Is this house actually going to double as a place of worship, where others will be invited to worship on a regular basis? If so, the property falls far short of the minimum two acres required by 430 dash 41C of this town's zoning ordinance. This applicant seems to have boldly assumed that you would just approve their request by purchasing this property and demolishing the existing structure before any of the necessary approvals and permits were in place. Granting this variance would completely undermine the purpose of the ordinance, I respectfully request that you deny this application and require the applicant to redesign the structure in compliance with the current zoning requirements, or build their dream house in a zone that actually permits it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your name, and tell us where you live, please.
Deepak Chandak, you want me to spell the name?
Yes.
D E E P A K, last name C H A N D A K, address 28 Carlisle Road.
What?
Yeah. I came here just for a regular evening, but listening to all the people, I realized a few things, and that's... few things, and that's what I'm going to share. First thing, from what I've heard, the thing is that you're not building on the park, and you're probably also not creating a garage on the street. Well, everybody has family gatherings, and I would want to understand if this neighborhood has never seen any Karl Park, and nobody has had any kind of family gathering. Even about that, what I'm also noticing is insensitivity to understand culture, you know, family values, taking care of your elderly. I think I come from a culture which I feel very blessed because our children want to live with us and support the parents when they need us. We have good relationship overall, and continuing further, because there was comment made earlier, the U.S. Supreme Court has recognized several family-related rights and indicated that there may be a constitutional right to live together as a family. Town ordinances and everything, I think Supreme Court succeeds that. I also want to be able to ride a horse and buggy, but the world has moved on, so what may have happened fifty years ago, or thirty years ago, or even ten years ago, may not be relevant because the world keeps changing around me all the time. Overall, the thing is, if you are not violating any height laws or anything like that, trying to make house in compliance with ordinance, or whatever the board suggestion is, I'm in support of this. Overall, property rights matter, so do family values, and whatever we can do to support overall. Thank you.
Please, sir, you were wrong. You were wrong.
Stop, stop. Please stop. I'm sorry.
Stop.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name, spell your name, and tell us your address.
My last name is M A N K O Mangal, and my first name is Satvinder, S A T V I N D E R, and I live on Twenty-seven Farming Hill Drive. Farming Hill is, I never raised a question, where is Caldwell? Where is that thing? You can find out Farming Hill Drive, where is Farming Hill Drive? Everybody, no, no, everybody has, everybody has addresses to know. I don't have to answer that, where is Farming Hill? Farming Hill Drive is Parsippany.
Sir, would you please address the board, the audience?
Sure, I would like to simply say one thing, that people are misconstruing, they are confused about the family, family, mother, father, sons. What happens in any culture lately, not lately even, my time, once they got married, the sons are gone out with the wife. So the families not keep on increasing in the house. The second thing people are confused about the gathering, how many times do we gather in one house? Maybe once in a Thanksgiving, or sometimes there is a prayer, but that is not going to bother the neighbors. When I live in my street, we never bother anybody. Or I go to friends' house in other town, we never bother. We just go there during the daytime and come back in the shortest possible time. So I don't think there should be any objection or problem about the family or gathering matters. Besides that, two sons, they'll get married, they'll go out, they'll have their own house, so left over is what? Husband, wife, and grandparents. Grandparents, how long they going to be? My question is, family matters. As long as we are supporting our family and family supporting us, that should be the best. I'm sorry about the addresses, but Parsippany has the town. Parsippany is a big town, lot of streets we don't know, but we Googled right away and we got the street, the house, everything. So I'm sorry if I mistake, I say anything wrong. Just take it easy. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, you've already had your opportunity. You've already had.
It's not about families.
You've already, you've already had your opportunity. You've already had your opportunity.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak?
You asked questions before, correct? Okay, but now you want to speak?
Please raise your hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name.
My name is Anthony Castellucci, C A S T E L L U C C I. I reside at eleven Homer Street in Parsippany. Do you have board members? First, I'd like to at least give acknowledgement and appreciation to the folks who've traveled outside of our neighborhood to give their support for this, but I am strongly opposed to the construction of the home, mostly for the reasons that my esteemed neighbor had stated earlier, the variances and all that, and for the most recent comment in regard to family and culture. We're not opposed to any, anything or against any type of cultural issue. This is a, this is a ordinance issue that we're trying to work through, the size of the house and what's permitted. It's, it's against the ordinance, and I'd like to just get focused back on that and remove the cultural and family issue. Whatever happens in someone's house is up to them, but at least build the, build the structure the way that it fits the guidelines and the aesthetics of our neighborhood. That's, and thank you.
Did you hear any testimony?
You just asked questions, please. You just asked questions before, right?
Yeah, I just asked questions.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your name, and tell us your address.
Alexa Lynch, Alexa, like the Amazon Alexa, and Lynch, L Y N C H, nine Homer Street. I would just like to briefly say that I've lived at nine Homer Street my entire life, and I consider myself extremely blessed to have done so. I even still live at home with my wonderful parents. And when my boyfriend and I talk about, you know, eventually wanting to buy ourselves our own home, we say, we want something just like this neighborhood. We've said it a million times, we absolutely love this neighborhood, and we keep coming back to the fact that all the houses look like they belong in that neighborhood. There's no outcast, there's no huge house in the middle, and yet now, if this is approved, that's saying that it's okay. And who's to say that the next house that goes on the market doesn't get knocked down and a mansion gets built? And the next house, and the next house. It's just allowing it to snowball time and time again, and that is a major, major concern for us. So this beautiful, uniform, quiet neighborhood that we have will ultimately end up being a couple nice houses mansion, couple nice houses mansion, and that is our main concern. And I really want to stress the fact that, I don't know if any board members live in our neighborhood, I don't believe so, my mom knows literally everybody, but if it were the case, like, would you be happy with having this monstrosity built next to your normal home? I'm sure that's probably not the case. And I also want to just circle back to the house that was originally on the property. The woman that lived in that home lived there her entire adult life, I assume. She was the original homeowner. It was a six-bedroom home because they had an addition above the garage, and it was, it was a nice, really, really nice home that could fit a bigger family, with a large extended family. So how come that house needed to be knocked down in order to accommodate what you're saying is only going to be six people, possibly eight with the wives? So after all that said, it just really doesn't make sense. In my perspective, the issue isn't the fact that they want to build this gigantic monstrosity. The issue is that they prematurely knocked down the home, because if you wanted to resell the home, that would have been fine. Now it's a gigantic dirt lot with a huge hole in it because the basement's still there. So now we just look out the window, and we see kids in the neighborhood playing in this big dirt pit, which is not only a safety concern, but it's aesthetically horrible. So I just, I really see an issue with the fact that if the original six-bedroom home wasn't accommod, wasn't able to accommodate this family, this huge mansion is going to accommodate who? And also, I know the culture thing was brought up. We live in Parsippany. I mean, really, we all are accepting of all different cultures. We have every single type of nationality living in this neighborhood. We have a wonderful neighborhood association. We all get along great. That has absolutely nothing to do with it. The problem is the look. And my mother passed out the pictures of the houses on our street. Anyone, literally anyone, could look at those pictures and then look at the plans and say, it doesn't work. It does not work. And that's all I can say.
Anyone else?
Let's hope I don't drop this.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your name, and give us your address.
First name Sigmond, S I G M U N D, last name Balaban, B A L A B A N, ten Gresham I feel obligated to address a few comments that were made on culture. We all have a culture, okay? We all have family. We all have integrity, okay? What is happening here is people are trying to reach a sense of balance, all right? To say that we look negatively on a group of people, or any group of people, is out of line and disrespectful, and I take that personally.
Can you raise your right hand, please?
I'm sorry, I apologize. We are the hills of Troy, and we are a family, all of us. Do we agree?
Absolutely not.
We have our disagreements, we have our points of view, we look at things through different eyes, but we have respect. And to presume that any of us disrespect one another is completely wrong. I personally, I wave at people I don't know when they pass my house, and I go like this. I don't go like this, all right? There is a difference, and everybody should understand that, regardless of where they come from, regardless of whether we agree or not. We're looking at things through different eyes and a different perspective. So please, please understand that. Thank you.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your name, and.
Gurdershan Singh, G U R D A R S H A N, last name Singh, I S, S I N G H.
And what is your address?
Seventy-seven Fairfield Road in Parsippany. I own the property, I did there. I strongly recommend this new number in the town, through the valley of the old neighborhood old, old street itself. No doubt it looks a little bigger, but if you look, if I compare the house which was there before and which is right now is proposed, front elevation is exactly the same. There's no change there on the, where you see from the front. It's only the height, it's a, it's a two-floor they are adding on. It's not, it's not, it's busy, anything like, somebody can say, okay, yes, it's very bigger. It's just the height is a little going up, but we are, Mr. Singh, he gonna be, as per the ordinance, they are, they are agreeing, all the ordinance, whatever the changes they are, you guys are proposing, so they are agreeing to it. So I strongly recommend that you guys should approve this application. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to come up and speak? Didn't he speak before? I wasn't thinking of the young man. Sir, would you like to come up and speak?
Yes.
Please.
I just want to refer to some information regarding the neighborhood.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name, and tell us your address?
Alfred Chambers, C H A M B E R S, one Ulysses Street in Parsippany. I've heard two comments here tonight that I disagree with. The builder represented that the homes in the neighborhood were twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. In this particular area, around the park and all up and down Homer Street, there are no three thousand square foot houses. They are probably, eighty percent of those homes are ranches or split levels, and the ranches are about sixteen hundred square feet, and the split levels are about two thousand one hundred. So this house would not look like any of those. And we, Ms. Lynch, she was kind enough to give you some pictures of houses in the area. You can see from these pictures that they are ranches and split levels. Was the house name on that picture? Okay. So Eight Homer, which is on this printout that you were given.
Which is identified as oh one for the record.
On exhibit oh one, it's the lower left side is the home that was knocked down. And the picture of the plans that were submitted, this is prior to the changes, whatever they're going to make, and these houses don't look anything the same, in opposition to what the last person had spoken about. So I disagree that this house should be approved. We have no problem with culture. I've had five children, went through schools in Parsippany. We've had no problem with diversity or getting along with people in the neighborhood. Family is great, but just build the house in accordance to the rules. We've all done it, so we'd like you to do the same.
Anyone else would like to come up to speak? Sir, you have heard the audience speak. Do you still want this board to vote on your application this evening?
Come back to the board with a revised plan. And again, the intent here, I want to reiterate one last time, is to work with the board, alleviate some of the fears of the neighbors. We'll try our level best, we'll come back with a revised plan and give it to you. All the changes that we proposed today will stand. We are not going to go back on any of these changes. All that we agreed, making the bathroom, half bathroom, stairs from the outside, they will go, deck will be conforming, the impermeable coverage will be less than thirty percent. The only, the loft will go, it will be, water pating will be gone, so all those changes we have agreed. Yes, when we are tapering off, we will definitely see a shrinkage of the house. We will try to see whatever best we can come, and then come back to you with a revised plan.
You, you've received the pictures that Ms. Lynch has given us.
That's right.
And you also. Is there any possibility that the front of this home and the home, the complete home, can mimic, possibly, some of these homes, the, not necessarily the architecture, but the building materials? For the, you have, this is a full brick home.
We have put stucco, but we are open to that. If the neighborhood has vinyl flooring, combination of vinyl and stone, absolutely, absolutely.
One of the things is this home is much more ornate than are the homes in the neighborhood, besides the material being different. So I think you should take a look at that, although no one commented on it. Also. The fit issue is a major issue here.
And also, you should re, just to make it a point again, because someone raised it before, and John has told you, you need to show proof of why you need that variance. Because I might agree with you on a lot of things, but if you're not going to show me proof of why you need that variance, for me, it's going to be difficult. I'm just telling you now.
Hundred percent agree, sir. But again, hardship is a very loosely defined term with no specific definition. For them not able to accommodate their parents on the first floor is a big hardship.
I think you should discuss this with your engineer.
Right.
And maybe.
And maybe discuss it with someone else who's disciplined, that would have a different opinion than your offering.
Maybe an attorney.
Yeah.
Why don't we just wait on this? I think you agreed to come back with a revised plan.
Yeah.
Okay. How long do you think the architect will take to get?
We already discussed these changes before coming to you, and that's what we proposed in good faith. We're going to get going on this, and if you give us the next date, we'll be back with you.
How long do you need, that's what he's asking?
In one week, we'll be ready with a revised plan.
You know, I hate to say this, January 15th, I am full, and this one application has taken up most of the night, and I have a bunch of applications that we're not gonna be able to hear tonight. So I apologize that it's so far out, but I am booked for the year.
And that's where precisely we were, that, you know, where do we go and where does it end? It keeps on snowballing, it keeps on getting pushed. We're talking about January now, which is more than three and a half months away.
Yep.
Can we request any accommodation if there is any cancellation? If there is any application that's being pushed, can we request? If you can be heard?
You would have to notice again.
Sure, absolutely.
So what are we doing?
January 15th is when your application with new plans?
New notice.
And new notices. Okay, sir?
They need a new notice for January 15th? Is there?
Everybody here?
I just wanted to request if there is any cancellation, anything, please, can we be moved up earlier?
You gotta get new notices.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We will give a 10-day notice, we'll put it in the newspaper.
Right now, we're putting the case on for January 15th, 2025, which would not require new notices.
Got it.
But you're granting the board extensions to make their decision through at least that date, correct?
We are requesting if there is any other date prior to that.
Just give me an answer to the question I just asked.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, if for some reason, there happens to be another date between now and January 15th that happens to come available, okay? And, and, and we happen to agree to put the case on that date, you will have to re-notice for that date. Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
That is extremely likely, unlikely to happen. Do you understand that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So assume it's January 15th.
Thank you.
Unless there's another notice, right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
Good night.
Could you give me a one-minute break, please?
Sure. We're gonna take a five-minute break, please.
We're requesting a adjournment because of the length of the first application. We have a very short presentation, so we were hoping to do a special 7 o'clock meeting in the next meeting, if you're agreeable to showing up a little early for that. We've got basically one exhibit to show you with what we're proposing.
So what date is that?
I was kinda waiting for Nora.
Oh, I'm sorry. October 9th would be our next meeting, we can do a special at 7:00.
October 9th. We'd ask that be done with no further notice, we'll give extensions through the end of October.
So that's October 9th.
October 9th.
At 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here for the application 2310 Klein Outdoor Advertising, 99 Fanny Road? Well, that will be carried for October 9th at 7:00 PM.
Sommurd.
Second?
Jaskowitz.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Application 2310 Klein Outdoor Advertising will be carried October 9th at 7:00 PM. Mr. Farley, application 2451, James Farley, 275 Lake Shore Drive, Block 581, Lot 30, Zone R4, C variance to construct, construct an open deck with stairs contrary to Section 430-35, Column 13. Mr. Farley?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
James Farley, F.A.R.L.E.Y. I am at 275 Lake Shore Drive, Lake Hiawatha.
Mr. Farley, you can sit down, please. Could you tell us a little bit about your application and why you would like to have?
I'm applying to build a deck, exterior deck attached to the house with stairs going down to an existing concrete patio. Reason I was denied a initial application was because of the amount of coverage of my lot. My lot is oddly shaped, I think just about a fifth of an acre, as you can see, like, you have my survey. It's gonna be, the deck is proposed to be installed over the existing half of the concrete patio. It's gonna be 16 feet wide by 14 feet long, and it would extend approximately two feet beyond the existing concrete patio.
So it's a de minimis impervious coverage?
So most, most of the coverage is there anyway?
Yes.
Concrete?
Correct.
And you're having no issues with water runoff, your neighbors, nothing?
No.
Okay.
I need to, working on installing drainage from the house to, you know, take, take water away from the foundation, which is currently just dumping, like dumping on the ground, but no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't be adding any other impervious coverage.
Are you gonna leave the concrete patio here?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask questions of this witness? See none? Would one of our members like to?
This is a minimum.
Hold on, hold on, one second, she's got one more question.
She's afraid there might be a yes.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to support or in opposition of this application? Anyone like to frame a resolution?
Yeah, this is a minimum request, and I'm in favor of this. Application 24:51, James Farley, 275 Lake Shore Drive, Block 581, Lot 30, Zone R-4, to grant issue C variance to construct an open deck with stairs contrary to Section 430-35, Column 30.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Breniani.
Yes. So your application has been approved. Soon as you, soon as the application is approved, it is approved, and as soon as we announce it at our, for a resolution, then you will be getting information from the township, and you can start your project.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Application 2456, A2ZRX LLC, 122 North Beverly Road, Block 513, Lot 29, Zone B5, a D variance for a pharmacy use.
Good morning, Mr. Chairmanwoman. Steven Tombalough here from Weider Law Group, Parsippany. On behalf of the applicant, Atta Rehman, A2ZRX, which is the proposed pharmacy on North Beverly.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and spell your name and give us your address, please.
My name is Atta Rehman, last name R.E.H.M.A.N., and my address is 4 Rockway Place, Parsippany, New Jersey.
And what's your relationship to the applicant?
I am the applicant.
You're the owner of the LLC?
I'm the, I'm the owner of the LLC, yes.
Again, I want to thank the board for hearing us. I know it was a tough evening thus far, but we're gonna try to keep this as simple, fast, and easy as possible. This is a use variance for a retail pharmacy in Lake Hiawatha. The reason we're here is that this particular zone, the business zone on North Beverly, allows plenty of uses, but pharmacy, retail pharmacy is not one of those uses. So that triggers a use variance, which is why we're here tonight. It's a thousand-square-foot store, it used to be a hair salon. Atta has leased that shop, it's half of the building, the other half is a restaurant, I believe. And he's just proposing, it's a use variance with waiver of site plan, because we're not making any changes, other than we're gonna re-panel the front sign with the pharmacy sign, and we're also asking if a second additional non-illuminated sign could be added to the side of the building. It's a request, we're gonna show you pictures of it, small sign, just announcing that it's a pharmacy, and the phone number for the pharmacy. So what I'm gonna do is, Atta, just introduce yourself, I mean, you've lived here, they probably know you, explain your history in Parsippany, how you've been a pharmacist in Parsippany for many years.
Yes, of course, thank you very much. I have a little prepared statement, if you don't mind, just one, couple minutes. Actually, I forgot why I was here, because it took so long. All right. Good evening, board members and fellow residents. My name is Atta Rehman. I have been a Parsippany resident for 33 years, alumnus of Parsippany High School, class 1993. I have been a registered pharmacist in the state of New Jersey since 2002, with local work experience at the Drug Fair, when it used to be next to Cost Cutters, also at the Walmart and Walgreens in Booton. But most recently, I was the manager and the owner of Hiawatha Pharmacy from 2010 to 2021, which is located on North Beverly Road in Lake Hiawatha. I am proposing to open a pharmacy at 122 North Beverly Road in Lake Hiawatha. Within the pharmacy, you'll see basic structure of pharmacy, a counter about, you know, the counter space about 150 to 200 square feet, which is required by the Board of Pharmacy. You'll have an over-the-counter section, you'll have, you know, everything that a, that a local mom-and-pop pharmacy would have, a prescription section, a non-prescription section, we'll have products, you know, home, home, home products, we'll have, you know, over-the-counter medications, your everyday use products, but nothing ginormous like a Walgreens or CVS within, obviously, the square grid that we have. The proposed pharmacy hours will be within farm, within hours of local businesses. We propose hours of 9 to 7, Monday through Friday, and 9 to 4 on Saturdays. And as far as employees working there and parking there, we plan on having maximum of two employees in the beginning at any one time. As business grows, we'll hope to have add another employee. The Board of Pharmacy regulations require us, limit us to basically having two technicians for every one pharmacist. Obviously, that plays a part in parking, which I'll talk about in a minute, and hopefully my statement will kind of answer some of your pending questions. My employees will be required, will be required to park on North Beverly Road or side streets, and will be encouraged to park as far as is feasible from the pharmacy to allow our customers adequate parking. I plan on, I myself plan on walking at times, because I live less than a mile away from the location, which I've done before when I used to have my other pharmacy, depending on weather and health-related things. Apart from my customers, who will require home delivery of medications, by the way, we, we will offer home delivery, we actually thrive on home delivery as far as my previous business venture. All walk-in customers will be required and encouraged to park on North, I don't say required, but they are encouraged to park on North Beverly Road or the side streets such as Oneida, Iroquois, Chesapeake. I'm also willing to have a sign displayed within the pharmacy to remind my customers to be mindful of parking spaces that do not belong to the pharmacy. Part of my commitment to service is to reduce the wait times of our customers, so they're mostly in and out. When you join my pharmacy, you are automatically enrolled in our Weight Loss Program, W.A.I.T. Loss Program. A lot of people, they do complain about sitting there at the pharmacy, waiting for the prescriptions for 30 minutes, 45 minutes. We thrive on basically cutting wait times as, as low as possible. So we intend to have our customers coming in, taking their prescription and leaving, and, you know, if they're in a parking spot on Beverly or on the side streets, you know, they're not taking up the space for too long. I am confident that an overwhelming majority of our customers will experience very short wait times, which will reduce street parking concerns. Basically, the gist of it is Parsippany needs another pharmacy in Lake Hiawatha. We need to go back and remember how things were in simpler times. We know we have other pharmacies in the area, bigger chains, but we want to go back to a time when you, you walked into a store, into a pharmacy, you talked to your druggist, he knew you and your grandma, he knew everything you were taking, he knew all your health conditions, you know, he was like your second doctor, he or she was like your second doctor. And when you walk out of that pharmacy, you want to know that you're in good hands. And that's what I want to bring back to Lake Hiawatha. And I know there are a lot of concerns about the parking, which maybe we can touch upon a little bit, but we want to make sure that our customers are respectable, respective of, respectful of the other businesses in the area, and that's something that we, you know, we will continue to monitor as, as we are in business. So let's bring that feeling of, you know, small-town pharmacy back in Lake Hiawatha, especially after the fact that Rite had closed recently, and there is news that pending closure of other chain pharmacies within Parsippany and the Booton area. So that's pretty much what I have to say. If any questions?
Oh, I got some more for you. No, Atta, all the medicines and drugs that are being stored and set are stored securely and according to state regulations?
Yes, of course. Basically, there are scheduled, there are non-scheduled, they're non-scheduled medications, and there's obviously C2, C3, C4, and C5s. C2s controls those drug substances. C2, C3, C4, and C5s will be secured in locked steel cabinets.
Sep, Septinaka?
Yes.
Now, deliveries, when these medicines or the products they're gonna sell, they're coming through the front door, correct?
Yes. What about deliveries? All of them would be through the front door. We usually get deliveries from UPS, from FedEx, from our local wholesalers, if they have private vans, but we don't have any kind of deliveries of, from large, large, you know, ten-wheelers or things like that coming onto Beverly Road, ever.
Now, let's talk about, you're not throwing out any hazardous medicines in the trash, are you?
No, never. We basically have reverse distributors that take back any expired medications. Pharmacies usually, as far as my, my practice, I usually, every quarter, we go through our stock inventory to make sure we remove any type of expired medications and prepare them for returns.
Now, in the board engineer's report, you noticed that there's some, the site in the back is really not well-kept. Have you spoken with your landlord about dealing with that?
Yes, we got news from them just recently that they will take care of any type of rubbish in the back to clean it up, to make it, you know, at least, to make it nice and clean for the-
And they will notify the tenant of the adjacent space?
Yes, they'll also notify the, the restaurant tenant next door.
Okay. Now, I understand, under state law, you're required to have a pharmacy sign, is that correct?
Yes.
Atta, we'll pass out and mark as Exhibit A1 is a simple sign plan, which should depict the proposed front signage, which is when the board takes a look at it. It's just refacing the existing panel, exactly with the dimensions that are there now, just with A2Z's logo and pharmacy information. And then the board will note on that, that on the side of the building, there's an opportunity to put a small second sign. That requires a variance, because already the building has two signs for both businesses, and this would be a third sign. It's just, Mr. Rehman thinks it would be helpful for his business to have a small sign. It's not gonna be illuminated. The front sign is illuminated, but just have a small sign on the side to help, help with visibility, again, non-illuminated. And as to the illuminated sign in front, right now, it's operated with a switch, but the landlord is willing to install a timer to allow that sign to automatically go off in the evening when the pharmacy is closed.
And what is the time that would be proposed?
7:00. At the moment, we are proposing our hours of operation to be Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
And he would be available to having, when the store closed, let's go.
Okay.
Explain this picture again, where it says hair happening, is that gonna be part of your space?
That is the space. Hair happening is the current space.
That's the, that's the picture of the existing? That's the, that's the picture of the existing?
Right.
It's going to be re-panelled with his...
With his pharmacy.
Yeah.
And the Bevick RX Pharmacy, that's the new sign that you'll be putting up?
Yes, sir.
Where is the third sign?
Well, it's one building that's split into two, so there's two businesses. Each one has a sign.
Oh, the third, the third sign is the other business?
Yes. Two signs for Mr. Rehman's business, one for the other tenant.
And the one showing on the side of the building will be on what?
Yes. Yes. Again, we're trying to keep this really quick, because I know the board's busy and has...
I had suggested you also discuss various, other variances and go with his property, but I don't think we can, because he's a tenant. We'd need an application from the property owner and that whole thing, so sorry about that. And otherwise, you would address all my complaints.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, fortunately, we have Mr. McDonough is going to come up and give the use variance proofs that the board really needs to hear to help support it.
D variance only.
Use variance only. Yeah. So let me just say to the board, I understand there's only five members here tonight, and it is a use variance, and you know we need five affirmative votes. If any board member feels uncomfortable or has any issues, please let us know, and then perhaps we'll address any of those concerns or ask that any vote be carried to have other members, just to avoid any unfortunate circumstances. Thank you. Unless you have any questions for Mr. Rehman?
Does the board have any questions? I do.
Are you aware of there are a lot of robberies happening in the pharmacies?
Unfortunately, yes.
Control drugs?
Yes. Very well aware.
Safety?
Yes, of course. We'll take precautions as far as, you know, our basic precautions that we do take are...
Recently, in Parsippany, two times pharmacies, robberies, 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning.
And we basically, the property itself, the pharmacy itself at closing is, the whole entire property is alarmed. There's been alarm system in place, which will, obviously, if something happens, you know, will be notified immediately. That's a standard procedure for pharmacies.
They will respond within five minutes, but these robberors are leaving in three minutes.
We try to...
We have a video of this.
Yes. We, with everything, we try to take the most precaution we possibly can, and we try to minimize any loss. Any kind of loss is obviously our goal.
Control drugs need to be very carefully secured. That's what I see.
Yes, of course. Well understood.
Not in the cabinet and lock. That's the requirement from the state. Just you can put in the closet and lock. You need to have a, like a metal kind of, you know, safety. There you can keep it. That is a safety. My suggestion.
Right. The Board of Pharmacy, the requirements of the Board of Pharmacy is, one option that we do have is to disperse the C2s and the C5s within your normal inventory. What that does is that it makes it a little bit more difficult for someone to come by and know exactly where to go. For example, if, you know, let's just take, for example, morphine. If you have a morphine pill under M, it's going to take some time for the person to figure out, oh, don't put it under M, put it somewhere else, within the normal inventory. And that take, that deter, that basically gives you a little bit more time to catch anyone that's trying to do something. But like I said, there's the option of keeping the inventory within the regular inventory, and obviously, there's the option of securing the control substance within a safety cabinet that's usually secured to the floor.
Will your alarm system be connected to the police station in Parsippany?
Yes, of course. My previous pharmacy had, had the security system with, with, to the police. We actually did have a few occurrences, unfortunately, and we were able to deter any type of theft. And the police was, was there within minutes.
There is a common driveway between your property that you're renting and the doctor's office next door.
Yes.
You do have some parking facilities in your backyard, once the debris is cleaned. How many, I know you mentioned that you're going to be having some, your employees, will they be parking in the back area?
No, we will not have anyone parking, nor myself parking, in that area behind the pharmacy, behind the, behind the building. We know it's a common driveway for the doctor's office, and we don't want to disturb that. We don't want to have our patients using our driveway to attempt to park in the back, or nor our employees to attempt to park in the back using their common driveway.
How many designated parking areas you have?
Right now, we're depending on street parking.
Absolutely.
And the, and the reason why I had picked this location on North Bevick Road is because the traffic kind of tends to dissipate towards this side of North Bevick Road. It's still kind of in the middle of town, which you want to be, but you're not where, you know, you're not in that area from, let's say, for example, you know, Lakeshore Drive to, let's say, you know, Lakeshore Drive to, you know, Hiawatha Boulevard, which is very congested on the street. And if you go further down towards, let's say, you know, Cherokee, you still have people, a lot of cars on, on the street. But once you kind of get past that, we did notice that there is more Hiawatha, North Bevick Road parking available in the area. And then there's two, two or three side streets that are very conveniently, very close to, you know, where our location is.
Would you be willing to speak to the doctor to see if you can use?
I read it.
And what did he say?
They basically, I did not even, I did not even request that from them. I basically told them that we don't plan on using your parking space.
Well, I think if you could perhaps use your, the back area, your yard, your back, back area, for your employees to park, that would alleviate some of the parking in the street, so that when your clients do come, there is ample parking for them.
Yeah, but then the doctor's people are going to park on the street.
No, the doctor has his own parking area.
If, if that's something that the, that the board allows, then I'm all for it. But otherwise, you know, we're going to, we're going, we're not going to disturb the doctor's parking. But there is a possibility, we can always go back to the doctor and come to some kind of agreement that after they close, which might, I think they close at 5:00, and our pharmacy will be open past that. If there's a good way we can come to, as far as parking after their hours, that's something we can talk to them about. But at the moment, I'm going to depend on, you know, everyone being respectful of, of the other...
No, if it is a nice summer, nice weather, you, we agree. You can walk to the store, and your employees can, but what about in the winter? That's what, you know...
Right. As I said before, it was weather permitting and health permitting.
Any other questions from our board? Any questions from the audience in the testimony that has been given by this applicant?
Madam Chair, I just have a question if I would.
Yes.
With respect to the, with respect to the parking in the back, the only way to get to it is by that common driveway. The only survey submitted is 40 years old. It doesn't show the parking, and it doesn't show any easement for that common driveway. Does this property have any rights to that
Did your landlord and you discuss the possibility for you using the rear parking spaces for your business?
They did discuss using the, the empty space behind the building for our parking.
And the landlord will allow that?
They discussed it with us, and they, they said that that is a parking spot for us. But at that point, too, we, we were very reluctant to say, okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and do it.
Why?
Yes, why?
Well, my, my question is, is there a legal way for you to get from North Bevick Road to that parking area? Because it's not your, it's not your landlord's property. So there would have to be an easement or something. So what I'm, what I'm asking is, is there an easement to get to the parking in the first place?
We don't have that research. We don't have the title. We'd have to check with the landlord. And if, if the landlord is willing to authorize it and permit us, we, of course, we need to explore it.
Right, but it's not the landlord's issue. It's the neighbor's issue that you're driving on.
If the landlord has easement rights, then, then he can promise us things. If he doesn't, then, but it's, as of now, the landlord said he could try, but he hasn't committed to it.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McDonough? Thank you.
Again, Mr. McDonough needs no introduction, but John McDonough, professional planner.
Just swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the full truth, and not the lie.
Yes, I do.
John, you've been qualified by this board many times. We would ask that the chair in the board acknowledge Mr. McDonough's expertise in professional planning, or he could provide you his qualifications.
For the record, John McDonough, licensed professional planner in New Jersey, current good standing.
We've heard you many times.
Thank you very much. Now, John has done his usual terrific job preparing exhibits, and then he'd be happy to provide the planning rationales.
And Madam Chair, as this is being handed out, it's going to be two pages, one exhibit. A2 for the record?
You get your U sign, it's wrong, I think.
We're keeping him busy.
Can you buy it?
No, I don't touch that thing. And with the purpose of the exhibit is, of course, to establish site suitability, particular suitability. I think this is one of those applications where the site will speak for itself. It's a single tax lot. We put a little arrow in there where the unit that the applicant is going to occupy, will occupy. It's going to be approximately half of the building. It's a very small space, less than, approximately 1,000 square feet, just to give a little scale to that. A typical 7-Eleven is about 3,000 square feet, or McDonald's, is a third of that. So this is going to be a very, very tiny space, very small in scale. It is a necessary land use, as you heard through our applicant now, and the statistics back it up as well. According to the statistics, seven out of every 10 people in the United States take at least one pill per day. If you're one of those three out of 10 that don't, consider yourself lucky, because most people do. So this is a necessary land use in, certainly in today's environment. We've given you a view in the bird's eye, the 3D, to show the mass and scale of the building, the access to the back, which again, through your expert, will establish that the applicant does have lawful access to the back there. Physically, the connection is there for sure. It's something that's been there for a very long time. You can see that in Page 2 on the second sheet, that it is sort of an L shape to that parking area in the back and that shared common driveway. In terms of the zoning relief, it is simply change of tendency here, taking the former nail, hair salon, which actually had a higher parking demand from a land use category standpoint than what the applicant is proposing here. A salon, as your engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz, pointed out, has a parking requirement of one per 150 square feet. This has a requirement of one per every 200 square feet, so a lesser parking demand from a zoning standpoint than that which was formerly there. We're in the B5 Local Business District. This is certainly a local business type of use, and the zone does permit a wide variety of retail uses and services. You can have an eatery here. You have one right next door. That actually has a parking requirement of one per 75 square feet. So in terms of the sliding scale of intensity of parking generation, this is on the lowest end of the spectrum compared to other things that would be permitted in the zone. The zone also permits medical offices, and we know the medical offices flank, both of, both buildings that flank this site are actually medical in nature as well. So there's a nice symbiosis, if you will, to have a pharmacy proximate to medical uses as well. We're looking for D1 use relief to allow the retail pharmacy, which is just not an expressly permitted retail use in the zone. The application satisfies the statutory criteria for relief on the positive side and negative side under Medici. In terms of site suitability, we're going to let the visuals speak for themselves. Condition-wise, it's a retrofit of an existing building. It requires no site modifications. Contextually, it's complementary and compatible with the other uses in the area, including medical. Clearly, there are special reasons in the land use law that are advanced here. Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, convenient access to medicines and the like. Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations, again, given that complementary nature of the use. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, because this application keeps what's there. It's familiar in the local eye, in the local landscape. And then finally, Purpose M, the planning goal for efficient use of land, because it's going to entail adaptive reuse of existing space. No construction issues related to what the applicant is doing here with this fit-up. On the negative side, all relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts to the public or to the zone plan. I think you've got good, solid testimony through our witness here that addressed my concerns when this land use, and as we typically see with this land use, security, safety, and certainly efficiency here in terms of taking existing space. It's very small scale, again, 1,000 square feet. CVS is typically 13,000 square feet, so this is nothing on that type of a scale. And again, the parking demand is less than a permitted use that could occupy this space. All said, given that extremely small scale of this land use, the degree of departure from the zone scheme is not going to be substantial. As for that little sign, that third or second sign, whatever you want to call it, related to this N cap unit, you can see in that first photograph, a little notch created by the building to the left, which is a skew from the frontage road. That will give a little demarcation, if you will, of where that driveway is that provides access to the back, and just lets the northbound traffic know on northbound approach that this is actually the pharmacy building. A pharmacy is one of those land uses where you have to actually have the word pharmacy on it, so the public knows. So again, that becomes a visual aid in that regard, and I think is justified under the flexible C balancing test, where the benefits of clear and safe site identification would outweigh any detriments. And with that, I would offer that this applicant has, has met its burden under the law and approval is warranted.
You need variances for both of the signs, right? Because only...
The second sign, just the side.
Just the side sign?
Right. The front, the front are re-paneling of what's there.
Okay. Just to make sure I understood. And it's, the signs otherwise comply, other than the existence of the one on the side, right? They're otherwise compliant?
It's a, it's a good question. I don't know if there's any dimensional relief related to that existing panel.
It's a pretty small sign. You made the, you made the size for the front for size. The side one is...
The side will comply in terms of size.
The side is not permitted period, so there would be no dimension requirement.
Correct.
So you would, how big is that sign on the side?
24 by 42.
What?
24 by 42. 25.
It's a little bit bigger than what you saw on the easel before, which would be a 2 by 3.
You sure it's 42 inches long? Did you already make it?
Yes, I measured it myself. It's 24 by 42, and there's actually, there's a frame already there that may have been assigned there previously.
It looks like a wire going to it.
It's basically, it looks like this, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry. But there's two, there's a, there's 2 by 4s, and, and that they're 24, sorry, 24 by 42.
Okay, so we know it's, it's a 2 by 3 and 1/2, 4, 3 and 1/2. I'm, it's going to be, I'm lit, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. And you've gre, who's cleaning the trash up in the back?
The landlord.
But it's going to get done.
We'll accept that as a condition, but the landlord representative tells us that it's going to be cleaned up.
Do you need a variance for anything historic?
But do you need a variance for the fact that you have no parking?
You know what? Mr. Chadwick's memo suggested, given the history of the site, that the board should consider effectively an omnibus approval that whatever pre-existing conditions exist, whatever pre-existing variances are recognized and continued.
But I don't know that, I think he just made the point that we don't have an application from the property owner for that.
We have the property owner's consent to allow this.
To apply for this?
To apply for this.
I don't think the nose covered everything.
We put the, we put the standard cover your...
We're just complicating this, right?
Yep. Okay, understood.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. McDonough?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that have questions of Mr. McDonough, of his testimony this evening? Seem on.
Thank you. I have nothing further. I believe the application speaks for itself. Again, we want to thank the board for hearing us at this late hour. Don't want to delay Joe and Neil's application any further, but we really appreciate an approval so Mr. Rehman could return to Lake Hiawatha.
Are there any comments from this board?
No, I think it's something that seems to be needed in town, and he's a longtime resident, and I'll be voting for it.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in support of this application or in opposition of this application? Seem on. Would someone like to frame a resolution, please?
Sure. Application 24, call 56, A2Z RX LLC, 122 North Bevick Road, Block 513, Lot 29, Zone B5, recommend granting a D variance for pharmacy use.
Seconded.
Verical X.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Brignani.
Yes.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Okay.
Guys, I'm sorry, but I do have to leave.
Yes.
Julia, my wife is awaiting. I'm sorry, it is 10.
I agree. Have to leave for Mr. Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
We have an issue, Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. O'Neill, there's an issue. Mr. Jaskowitz has to leave.
I have to leave. It's not going to be 10 minutes, I'm afraid, and I'm, I gotta go. My wife is calling me. I could, I'll be here early for the next week. I'm sorry.
There's only four of us, sir.
Yep. I'm sorry.
Nora, Joe, would you, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Neill?
How's everybody feel about 6:30 on October 9th?
I'm available.
Half an hour.
Gentlemen on the board, has everyone agreed, 6:30 on October the 9th?
You're going to get everybody here.
Well, as long as we have five. Mr. Petty, can you make it 6:30, the next meeting, October 9th?
I'm being told by my people they can't do it.
Oh, you can't do it? Okay, okay. Then we'll-
What can you do, Mike?
I don't know.
All right, back to 6:30 on October 9th.
Mr. Petty?
I'll compute tomorrow, because I'm tempted, I already have some work thing going on.
October the 9th?
It might work for me, but-
No, I need a definite answer tonight.
You have to answer it, not the, they're going to be in and-
Yes, I have two other people to-
Right, right.
Mr. Berkowitz, are you able to make 6:30?
I'm sorry, you know. Yeah, all I have to do is remember to come.
If we could carry to 6:30, and if we have to carry it again from there, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, at worst, it would be the following at 7:00.
I'd carry it from 7:00.
You may have more, you may have more members too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, poppy, it will work out.
We're going to carry it 6:30, October 9th.
Somewhat.
Second, we need a second, please.
Second, Berkowitz.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I might be coming, but.
Thank you, thank you.
A motion to close the meeting, please?
Somewhat. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?